Good.
All right, we're going to call this meeting to order.
......................................................
All right, thank you. Mr. Scott, can you call the roll?
Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mr. Jerick.
Here.
Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Rittenhouse.
Here.
Mr. Scott here, and Mr. Strobel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
We are all present.
Thank you. Just briefly go over the procedures for public participation. Prepared statements that are to be read to the board should now be presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphones, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items acted upon, comments will be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. Having said that, we have no agenda edits, but we do have the superintendent's report. Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Matt, and President. I have a few items to share with the board this evening. Our high school hosted our DBA-sponsored trick-or-treat event for young learners on the 27th. It was a couple of weeks ago. It was very well-attended. I wanted to thank our DBA and our students who participated, the staff who participated, our board. I saw some board involvement there. And also, thank you to the community for the high level of engagement and commitment to that event. I think there was over, a little over 800 young trick-or-treaters that came through the building that evening. It's nice to see you come back inside the building. You know, in the past, we've had the trunk retreat due to the COVID mitigation rules in the past, but it was nice to see the kids get back into the building. I attended the cavalcade of bands hosted by government from the high school this past Saturday. It was good to see our marching blazers participate in that event. This is, I know, their season for their competition, and I know they've had quite a few weeks in a row. They've got another one coming up this weekend. I think it's the final one.
Sunday.
On Sunday. Our data from the 21-22 school year continues to have recently been released by the Pennsylvania Department of Ed, and which precipitates our district 2022 executive summary from our Office of Academic Affairs. That will be shared at our December Curriculum Instruction Committee meeting. The office is putting that together currently. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper. Not this past weekend, but the weekend before, I attended the marching band competition. I believe Mr. Early was there as well, in Phoenixville. And congratulations to those students. I know they have one more competition, and they've worked really hard. So, moving on to superintendent's board report. I don't know who wants to go first. Ms. Reece? Okay.
I am. So, for the intermediate center, I think they have the classes book there coming up, and they're very excited about it. And then for extracurricular, they just had Fall Fest. And for cultural, they celebrated Red Ribbon Week. And for the primary center, today actually is the 50th day of school, so the kids dress up in their 1950s apparel. And then for extracurricular, they also celebrated Fall Fest on Halloween, and they also celebrated Red Ribbon Week. And for the middle school academics, the first marking period of new journalism for the eighth and seventh graders is going to be great. They're producing amazing results. Extracurricular, winter sports for beginning registration and physicals. Cultural began Spirit Week this past Friday, starting with Pink and Purple Day. And for the high school, extracurricular, a powder puff game happened. And culturally, that one coming week, Spirit Week, contains many fun and involving activities, as well as safe sugar shoot night conducted by the school club.
Thank you, Ms. Sheppen. You guys, they let me know that they have other engagements for the rest of the day, so thank you for giving your presentation.
Yeah.
Have a good night.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay. All right, so moving on to finance. The two, number two and number three that are listed there were discussed a little bit more in-depth. In, no, I'm sorry. Number two and number four were discussed a little bit more in-depth in the facilities meeting. If anybody wants to hear from Mr. Strobel on those right now, he can, or he can talk about that more in-depth when we get down to the committee meeting reports. Does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about anything under finance? Okay. Any public comment on finance items? Okay. Programs, we got nothing. So, any public comment on the fact that we got nothing? Personnel, three retirements or resignations, no leaves, one appointment. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on those?
No.
Any public comments? Presentations by board members, secretary's correspondence.
I have nothing to report. There was one email that I can't discuss if it involves personnel and stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Intermediate unit report, Mr. Jerick.
Just a lot of personnel contract approvals, just a lot of admin stuff. They did send out a little flyer detailing federal grant programs, I think some of which we might be looking at. I'm not sure, Rob would probably know better, but like the, there's a mental health grant. I think it's in here, school-based mental health services grant program. Mental health service professional demonstration grant program. A lot of stuff that could be pretty interesting. We might be able to avail ourselves of.
Okay.
And the next meeting is the number 17.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Jerick on this report? Moving on to BCT board report.
All right, we met on October 22nd, or 26th. They already talked about senior recognition will be at Santana Arena again on May 30th. They got a spyglass agreement that looks for savings in contracts. I thought that was interesting, and something to look into for us.
Okay.
They're having an open house at West Campus, or they did November 1st, and East Campus on November 9th. And they're hoping to have an additional open house in February targeted at school students.
Yeah, those have been heavily advertised in the county. Those are the ones.
Yeah. And then as far as bad weather events, she said that she's creating a group email for all the sending districts three days before a weather event. And if the majority of the districts are canceling, then they will make a decision to cancel school.
Okay. And is that a change from previous years?
It sounded like it was new this year.
Okay, okay.
And then the next meeting is our reorganization meeting on December 15th.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Thompson? Legislative report, Mr. Strobel.
We didn't have a meeting last month, but we have one tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m.
Excellent. Can't wait to hear about it. Okay. Other reports, are there any? Any questions from the board on any of those reports? Any public comment on any of those board reports? Enrollment is listed there with attachments. Any questions for the administration on those? Any public comment? Curriculum instruction. Is all right. Okay, sorry.
Okay, my internet is being flaky. Yes. We talked about the calendar. I believe there's going to be three different versions that we're going to discuss. What starts school here? And we met on October 23rd.
Okay. And next meeting will be before, like, what, the 21st, or is it?
Two weeks, yes. We do have the calendar for the board to view right there. There's three different scenarios there. If you want to take a look at them a little bit further.
Oh, yeah, it's under, it's attached.
It's attached, correct.
Okay. Where is it attached?
Right below. It says administrative content.
Oh.
You'll see a link.
It's under exec, it's under, it's not in the public form.
Right. Administrative content.
Yeah. If you put in your login info. And... Yeah.
I mean, the difference between the three calendars are an ending date of, the one that we shared at the committee meeting, which is May 31st, has the end dates Friday, May 31st, with the start of school.
Oh, there it is.
Would be, in that calendar...
Okay.
In that calendar would be a Wednesday, August 23rd. Or, there's another version that shows Wednesday, the 5th of June, which is obviously the following, start of the following week of that, 31st, would be midweek of an ending date with a start date of Monday, August 28th. And then the last scenario would be carrying it to Friday, the 7th of June, with a start date of Wednesday, the 30th of August.
Yeah, I was able to pull it up when I put my password into Board Docs a second time. So, we will be voting on one of those three next meeting. Yeah. And if you'd like to have a discussion about the differences now, we can. If you'd like to wait until the, I mean, especially folks that don't attend that meeting, the, I'm sorry, the curriculum instruction meeting. At the curriculum instruction meeting last, this past, this last month, the, there was a calendar presented to show, like, starting school the 23rd of August and ending May 31. And the board members that are in that, some of the board members that were in that meeting had asked if we could maybe be talking about starting a little later and ending a little later, so that it's still, you know, so that we would be ending in June as we have in the past.
Turning up for Labor Day, is that?
No, that's not, that's not, that's not, that's not what's being, what's being discussed.
What was the purpose for moving it earlier?
It's actually by, like, a day.
Yeah.
It's just because of how the day shift is, like, a little different than this year, but it...
But because, because of where the days off fall, because of the fact that, you know, like, because I think that it's the 4th is the day of, is Labor Day. It just makes it, it just makes it look like a lot different.
I got it.
May sounds a lot different than June. So...
Right. And it's only by, difference by a couple of days.
Seven times the charge.
It's just the 23rd does sound...
Oh, what, Wednesday? I don't know. Is there a specific reason for the in-service on Wednesday of this week?
Just the way they count. That's when it fell this time, yeah.
That's when it fell. I think that, I actually think that either of the ones that are presented for ending in June are fine. The, the 7th preserves the fact that, like, graduations are Friday. And that is if we, if we use, or if we use only RFID days and we don't have to go into snow days, because then we would have to push it to the following week anyway. But I don't have an issue with having, having graduation not be on a Friday. So, like, ending the 5th or the 7th is fine for me, but if you think it matters a lot to have it be, to end at the last day of school, be a Friday, you know, I don't have an issue.
And the 31st would be a Wednesday.
I don't know what the big deal is.
Thursday, 31st.
Wednesday's fine, Thursday's fine.
Yeah, but I'm talking about the other two options that are being presented. What's that?
Thank you, Angela.
I'm sure Labor Day is my vote.
Okay. They start on the 22nd of, and that would not be a, and that wouldn't be a school day, no matter what, for us, right?
Correct.
So, so it would be a difference of our students missing one day of school versus three, three or four days of school, five days of school? It would be a difference of our kids missing one day of school versus three or five.
Well, they're conflict days, so our students still attend.
Yeah, but they, but they, we don't...
Correct. They just have to get themselves here.
They have to get themselves there.
Here, and then we...
Do you look at any of the holidays at all, rather than...
We, we have counted, there's a 190, it's 180 student days, and there's 190 contracted teacher days, so...
With the calendars, like, do we just look at the start and end dates?
No, we...
Play with the dates, or do we play with, like, if we start, I feel like August 23rd sounds so early to me, but do we look at, like, lengthening holiday breaks in July of the year, rather than getting out on the 31st? Or we just play beginning and end?
I mean, we took the traditional days off wrapped around the holidays that we typically do.
Right.
I mean, you can take, you know, we could take an Easter Monday. We could take the Monday after Thanksgiving, but, you know, and then that'll manipulate the start, the front and back end of it.
Looks like they do have the Monday after Easter, right?
Yeah, he's talking about taking them away.
No, taking away, making it a school, making it a school day. Well, that's, that's, those are the days we have to play with, so that's...
This is a school that, at least as far as, as long as my kids have been going here, we've never been a school district that takes a full week off for Easter, and I'm fine with not doing it. Yeah. Our breaks are shorter. And which nobody complains about when it comes to be the first week of June, and we're done.
So, when are we off for, what are the off days now for next time?
Thursday, Friday, Monday?
Are you talking about this year's calendar?
Um, yeah.
I don't think we have the two days before Easter, do we? Maybe Friday?
This year is...
Thursday or Monday?
Yes, Thursday, yes, Monday, Thursday, Friday, and Monday.
Nobody ever thinks I know what's going on. But I do.
Just want to make sure, give an accurate information.
Nobody ever thinks I know what's going on, but I do. That's on Thursday, Friday.
It typically, it's three days.
So...
With the weekend.
And then two extra days in a week, that's five total.
I wasn't...
I'm still voting for September 5th, but that's...
That's not an option.
I like...
When's it go to school before Labor Day? This is, this is justice now.
I mean, how, how long has it been?
Let's put hands in the air and see.
I do.
All of, all of, you know, again, my kids have always, since I've been going here, except for one year, we started September 1 because we were in a contract dispute. We've always started in August.
What do the teacher associations say?
I did ask you, I asked you to check.
The calendar, the calendar I shared with them originally was that the end on 5/31.
And they were happy with that.
Yes.
Any, do they have...
That's starting on the 23rd?
Yeah. Did they, did these other options that we're looking at, did they offer any comments?
We were scheduled to meet tomorrow, but I had to push that exec council meeting back till next week.
All right. So, we might have some input on what their thoughts are before the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I would, too. But they, they have no, no negative comments on ending on the 31st either?
No.
So, any other comments before we move on? I know we didn't make a decision, but... Any public comments?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay.
Jimmy can.
Be honest with you. The Trump rally tonight, so I was debating if I was going to stay at home and watch that, or come here. But the recording is... The calendar. I mean, being a kid once, I always remembered, you know, dragging, having to come back to school, you know? But summer break, you couldn't wait, so you kind of anticipated that time, you know what I mean? Whether it be, we always went to school till June 12th, like, you know, the end of June. We started later, which kind of meant that our summer was longer, you know what I mean? And I'd be coming back, and whatever. Most kids, or even parents want a longer, some old parents want their kids back in school. Our kids want, you know, longer summer, they have to come back early. I always told them, "Come back pretty early." So, that was just my, you know, food for thought. I like the idea of Labor Day, if the Labor Day could have back to school because, you know...
I think it's official.
A lot of times, you know, as parents, they have holidays, and you almost have to, you know, go to school, or you can't really schedule that last, you know, go down the shore with your kids and things like that. So, you always have to, you know, cancel your shores when I'm going down because, you know, you try to get, even the easiest thing of the time for Labor Day, too. So, that's just my food for thought.
Thank you for sharing.
No problem.
That will help you.
Thank you.
That's okay.
We're talking about calendars, right, Bell?
Yes.
Turn on the...
So, talking about calendar from the state of New York, something that we did bring up on the coffee with the principal meeting was holidays. The state of New York, there's a large Jewish population where they do take into consideration Jewish holidays, in that they start school a lot later. They take their start of year as Passover week, because Passover is one whole week. And then there's other Jewish holidays sprinkled throughout the year. So, in the state of New York, we started after Labor Day, and then we ended school mid to late June. Now, I do like the early end of June, so, I mean, I don't know however which way you guys can decide it, but I do understand that there is a population within our community that are Jewish, that they do honor those holidays. And I think it would be wise if Daniel Boone takes that into consideration. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other public comment on curriculum instruction? Moving on to extracurricular, Ms. Bell?
We do not have a meeting.
Okay. And next meeting is scheduled for December 5th?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Facilities and transportation, Mr. Strobel.
Yes, so is transportation.
We have a big ol' laundry list.
Huh?
We have a big ol' laundry list.
Little laundry. We did go over the snow RFP, and we did recommend, out of the committee, halters for that.
I just want to point out, the reason for that is because Edwards pulled out their bid. They drew their bid. That's not the only reason we went with halters. I don't, I don't know, the recommendation is halters. I'm not saying we would have said one thing or another, but there was no other bid to evaluate.
We talked about selling slash disposal of used kitchen equipment. We talked about it earlier. If anybody wants details on that, for some new equipment that's new to the news, we're going to put that to good use and sell it and take the money and use it somewhere else. We talked about roof repairs over a middle school. There's two valleys that have been leaking, and the company, Trent Co., has contracted to do it for the material-only, no labor, savings for the school of about $2,500 bucks. And that is $5,497.73, and that will be pushed through from committee out as well.
Yeah, that is already listed in, under finance, yes? Am I wrong?
Item four.
Item four. But, but we will amend it to say that it was recommended out of committee.
Same with the disposal of the equipment that was recommended.
Right, that's right.
There was a discussion and a recommendation from the committee to put a security fence over monocracy around the playground area to help protect the kids from, like, a loading dock and some different areas if they're just crossing over the cones and whatnot, it's not safe, for $4,500. Fire alarm, this D-wing is not working properly, so we have a temporary solution until we get that bid taken care of, and there won't be new wires, and that whole thing's got to be bid, this whole D-wing. When the last test did not work, functioned properly. The generators repairs, we completed the inspections, and there was one generator we voted on last meeting, and the repair was $800, and that's been completed and all been working well now. The transition house is having some septic issues, and so there's a lot of discussion around what the possible solutions are to be for that. And the transportation section, the cameras will be done by the end of the month.
Okay. Any questions for...
Next meeting, December 6th.
I apologize. Any questions for Mr. Strobel from the board? Any public comment on facilities transportation? Okay, moving on to finance. That meeting took place October 24th. We had a discussion about the Act 57. What makes it, that was, we have voted on it that same night, correct? There was a new law that went into effect that talked about allowing homeowners that didn't know they owed taxes to get, to get, waiving of fees and, fees and penalties. And so, we, we, as required by law, had a resolution on that at last meeting. We talked about the Act 1 calendar. There are two different ways that we can attack our, creating of our budget and submitting that information to the state. If you want to, if you want, if you want to raise your taxes up to the adjusted index, or above the adjusted index, you have to follow one calendar, which is a lot more labor-intensive and gives us less, we have more things to do, but it enables us to have more flexibility in how we assess taxes at the end of the year. If we, if we don't want to go above the index, there's a little bit less work for us to do on the, on our end. And the recommendation out of committee was that we were recommending, going to recommend to the board that since the adjusted index is so high right now, is it 5.3?
Yeah.
It's, that's significantly high, 5.3%. There, we have never, ever, ever raised taxes since this board has been in its, its even partial configuration anywhere near that percentage in one year. So, we thought that there would be no way that we would need to go above 5.3 at the end of the year, so we would be interested in recommending that the board goes with the more, less strict timetable where we have to have our, we, we commit to staying below the adjusted index, and then the next due date is March.
Yeah.
Instead of February, for us to submit things to the state. So, those of you that have been through that process before...
It's actually May, so...
Oh, I'm sorry, May.
I heard the end, so...
And those of those, so when we have our first budget meeting, we'll go through that again. At any point in time, we can vote on whether or not to go with the, is there a... At any point in time, we can vote on whether or not to go with the, is there a specific term for that, that truncated calendar? Is it just, is it just, it's just giving-
It's doing a resolution.
Doing a resolution saying we won't go above the index. So, we can either discuss that now, if you wanna discuss it as a larger group, or we can discuss it at the next, at the budget committee meeting in, in January. I don't know, if you wanna have a discussion about it now? Okay. The next, the other thing that we discussed is we did get additional funds from the state beyond what we were anticipating this year. And so we were trying, we were gonna try to get our arms around where we were with our, with that additional money and where it is and, and if maybe there could be some sort of tax relief. We, we had that discussion, discussion's not over. We will be continuing that discussion at our next, our next finance committee meeting. And the next finance committee meeting will be January twenty-something. I don't know what day it is.
December.
December.
No, we, no, we're not having one in December.
No, we're in December.
We're not having one, oh, we're not, we are having one in December, we're not having one in, in November.
Right.
So that'll be December, what, eighteen?
That would be December nineteenth.
Nineteen, so next meeting will be December nineteenth for finance. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board on the finance discussion? Any comments from the public on finance? Policy review.
So we had a meeting this evening, we discussed four different policies. We discussed policy zero-zero-one, the Asian classification, zero-zero-five, organization, nine-zero-three, public participation in board meetings, nine-zero-four, public attendance at school events. Our next meeting is December vet.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions about policy for Mr. Scott? I know your name. Mr. Scott or Mr. Hurley from the board? Any public comment on policy? Moving on to technology, Mr. Strobel.
We met on the twenty-fourth of October, and we wanna push it out of committee that we moved from Blackboard, the contract ends this year, and go into what we call Apogee. And Scott would be able to give a whole lot more details on it than I can, you know, but it apparently gives much more mobile friendly. It's mobile driven, so that, you know, people will be able to interface with it a lot easier through mobile, which is a majority. There was a setup of ten thousand dollars and the cost per month was less, it was like sixteen thousand one hundred per month. It allowed more editors.
Annually, that was annually. It's annually.
Annually, yeah.
Sixteen-one annually.
I'm sorry, annually. And then there was more editors allowed, we could push content through all three platforms, there was a better support process. They can report unused content, clean it up, so this webpage stays cleaner and less money, so it sounded like a pretty much a never breaker. So we would like to push that out of committee.
Anything else?
Project update, Stock Finder app. The bait test went well, next phase is now assign a person to lead it for rollout to the public. Parents interface with it and then they'll map it out for everybody else. They're gonna do a building in time. Cybersecurity awareness, as of Friday, they completed about sixty percent of it, and every month they're gonna do a new testing. So they're sending out testing to the employees and other people for cyber awareness, phishing, email and whatnot, and it went pretty well. Actually, I was pleasantly surprised.
Good.
Integrated learning, training, Tracy's focusing on the middle school, doing seminars and getting feedback.
Yeah.
Okay. Next meeting is December twenty-first.
Okay, and I just, before you ask a question, I just, I just asked Dr. Cooper if he can get Scott Matts to be here at the voting meeting to discuss the changeover from Blackboard because, and the only reason I'm asking if he, that he do that is because whenever we change, there's a lot of discussion, you know, and sometimes there's regret. And not, not like, you know, if, if the company's dying, you know, if Blackboard's not gonna exist anymore and the, you know, that's, that's one thing, but, you know, or, you know, I just want him to give a presentation to the board that wasn't at the, the finance, the technology committee, you know, because we've had a couple of situations recently where, when we've had to change, you know, there's been some growing pains and, you know. Absolutely, but I, but I'd like everybody to kinda get a little short presentation that we got.
Yeah, and, and the, the Blackboard of which we speak, it's not the, the learning management system, Blackboard portion, it's the web hosting of it. Blackboard has sold that division to Final Site. And we were finished with that contract at the conclusion of this year. I had the opportunity to take a look at Apogee and, and took a look at that and basically it's, it's more mobile friendly and they built the website backing in, backing into the actual website through the use of a mobile device. We know that most of our folks have that device on them, handheld device on them almost twenty-four-seven, so it's a little, it's a lot more user friendly from that aspect.
So this isn't what they use for middle school, Blackboard?
Again, it's, it's, there's two, this could be confusing. Blackboard is the learning management system that we also use as a district at the secondary level. We also use Blackboard, it was the same company for the web hosting. They sold that division to Final Site.
So we're just talking about, we're just talking-
So we're not talking about the learning management piece, we're talking about the web hosting piece.
Yeah, so I just, I just wanted him to be able to give that presentation that he gave to the technology committee.
To the board.
Briefer.
Yep.
Just so you feel comfortable when it's time to vote, that you know what's going on. So, any, anything else? Any, any other comments, questions on the technology? Any public comment?
I just have one question, is it possible, is there a site out there where we can get everything on one site? Not knowing whether I've gotta go to Infinity Campus, to Blackboard, or Planet HS, or wherever Planet HS is now, has that changed again? And I, I never know where to go, what to do, it takes me forever to figure things out, and it's driving me absolutely crazy. So, if we could find one site where we could put everything, that would be awesome.
Yeah, I mean, we're not, you know, I know we'll have a more fulsomeansome answer from the, from, from, you know, the administration. But, what's that?
From Scott.
Yeah, but he's always on the lookout for that, like, for example, he tried to get, you know, we tried to, like, get Blackboard to serve us in two different ways, and then they broke off into two different companies, you know, and, you know, there, there aren't a lot of, there aren't a lot of things on the market that serve our needs at all levels of, of schooling and all of our needs.
I thought I saw something about this in the proposal, what was it called, Apogee?
Yeah.
Apogee.
And, and he's-
That was a little more user friendly.
And he's, and he's, he's always on the lookout for something that can encompass a little bit more to, to make it so that we get fewer and fewer, you know, targeted, targeted apps. And I, we ask them these questions all the time. So far, the answer is not yet, you know. Part of it is also that we get, you know, some things, we, we get through the IU, so we have to use what they're using, and, you know, we're, we're, those things are, we're removing ourselves from a lot of those contracts.
Can I give you specifics on clicks? That was one of his main reasons for going down this path.
Right, yeah, to find ways to get it all together.
The ultimate goal to, like, streamline of my sixth graders using Blackboard, my fourth graders using Google Classroom, my second grader is using, I don't remember, my kindergartner is on CSO.
That's a great question for Scott.
Those, yeah, and it is, and, and you're right, you're right that, you know, streamlining is great, but we also have to be concerned with, you know, if there are trade-offs to be made, are there ones that we're willing to make? You know, if using, if using something that can serve more grades is available, but maybe if it's not ADA compliant, do we, do we make that trade-off? You know, it's, it is, it is a hard decision.
Every year, it's been learning a new software.
Understand, absolutely.
It's kind of frustrating.
I know.
Well, maybe it was Scott's area, maybe.
Yeah, I know that he's, he tries, but it's not, it's not-
But maybe he can answer his question.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
I understand you just need the web provider, not specifically going down different things like Blackboard.
Yeah, but that question that you asked, it's like, as parents of students and former students, and also as folks that hear the concerns and complaints from the community and from the teachers and from the students, you know, that, that is, that is something that we would like as well.
I think that you would've put a lot more color to it.
Mm-hmm, absolutely. Any, any other public comment? Thank you for your comment. Hearing none, oh, business. Proving the minutes, any comments, questions, concerns on the minutes from last month? Any public comment on that? New business, we got nothing. Public comment on that? So, presentation by the public on any, for, on any issue? Anyone?
It's been great from how many times we've been here. On October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two, the CDC advisory committee voted in favor to add COVID-nineteen vaccine to the recommended immunization schedule for children and adults. This does not mean, mean that it will be mandated, but as we have seen in recent history, non-elected officials have the right to policies that we must follow. I'm not against vaccines, and I'm, but I'm against administering vaccines to children that have not been properly tested and vetted for its long-term effects. We have seen that there are side effects to this vaccine that are potentially fatal. I have supplied you with a nine-page list of the side effects from this vaccine. Some of the normal, some are normal, such as injection sites, soreness and redness. Others are much more severe, such as myocarditis, pericarditis, acute myocardial infarction, and acute respiratory failure, to name a few. It has come out recently that the COVID-nineteen vaccine does not reduce the transmission of COVID-nineteen from person to person, and that was not even tested for that by Pfizer, Pfizer for its initial approvals. It is supposed to reduce the severity of COVID-nineteen, however, the majority of the severe cases of COVID are in infected people. The risk of serious illness or injury for a child actually catching COVID-nineteen is very low. Why would any child be given a vaccine that does not stop the transmission of the disease and is designed to lower the severity of the disease that will not be seriously affected by it? This is a prime example of a cure being worse than the disease. It's amazing to me that the manufacturers of these vaccines cannot be held responsible for any harm that comes from these products. The CDC cannot be held responsible for any harm, as they are only recommending the administering of the vaccines. State local officials cannot be held responsible because they are going off the recommendations of the CDC. That means that if a parent follows the recommendations of professionals and follows the requirements of the state, county, and district for their child to attend school and their child gets sick, or God forbid dies, there is no accountability for anyone but the parent. I strongly urge you to consider not adding the COVID-nineteen vaccine to the required immunization list for school here at Daniel Boone. If this goes, if this does get added to the required list, my son will not be getting the vaccine, as I feel his health is far more important than any, than a public school education. I will homeschool him or find a private school that does not require the vaccine. I will also advocate for other parents in the district to pull their children. This is now and always has been about protecting our children. Thank you.
I didn't have anything prepared, because I didn't know how to get these pictures to you, so I thought this.
Oh, that's good.
But I did wanna bring up the book fair. On October fourteenth, I pulled my kids out of school, we went to an independent book fair at a local Christian private school. I did that purposefully because I just didn't know what Scholastic was going to present. And my daughter took a snapshot of a section of the book fair that was highly concerning. One book is called The Hate U Give, Anti-Racism Guide. That's cool. Revolution, Freedom Now, that's cool. Dear Martin, which is the Trayvon Martin story, I'm gonna find that one. And then it's This Is My America. This is the incredible, searing emotion of tragic collision of racism and a flawed criminal justice system. Read and reread and reread again. There's another book that is called, I don't know the title of it, but it says Boy Meets Boy, Boys Become Friends, Boys Fall in Love. I'm not opposed to diverse books, I'm not opposed to it at all. When I was looking back at what kind of books that I read when I was a kid, I read books from Charlotte Bronte. Does anybody ever remember Charlotte Bronte, Jane Eyre? Pride and Prejudice, if you don't know Mr. Darcy, then you didn't have a childhood, because Mr. Darcy was a very top character, especially amongst middle school girls and high school girls, because we all love Mr. Darcy from Pride and Prejudice. Like, there was Charlotte Bronte, there's The Chronicles of Narnia, there's Shane Austen, there's George Eliot, there's Virginia Woolf. There's all these classic authors who wrote amazing books. When I really look back and I look at those books, I'm not sure the literacy rate of the kids today can even consume books to that stature, which is highly concerning. So again, I'm not opposed to diverse books, but when the only books that are presented in a book fair represent the propaganda being pushed, I think your parents should be notified that there's gonna be these types of books at the school. I also think we really need to challenge the literacy rate and literacy level amongst all students within Daniel Boone, because you can only become a better person in society if you can actually read and read properly and read cursive. Read all books from all different walks of life. Can they read Shakespeare? I remember interpreting and analyzing Shakespeare literature by the time I hit ninth grade. I can't even tell you if the eighth graders today can read anything more than a manga. And a manga is just pictures and a few words under pictures because they can't conceptualize books. So I have a really big concern about our literacy level and rates here within the school district, and I really do think we need to vet books before they come through, because I don't know if half the parents know that those books were there. Anti-Racism Guide, come on, like, dude, anyway. I also wanted to say that my daughter challenges societal beauty standards daily. I had a kid from up the street ask me if I could twist and braid her hair, because she wants to look just like my daughter Addison. Kids naturally integrate. We don't need books spreading division, that's all.
Truth.
Anyone else? Okay, so I just wanna, it's my public service announcement. Tomorrow's election day, and I think it's everyone's duty who's above the age of eighteen to sign up, to register to vote. If, if any of you aren't registered to vote, it's too late for tomorrow, but, but you should. You know, our midterm elections in general, the state has about a forty percent turnout rate for midterm elections. Last, in twenty-eighteen, we had about sixty percent, a little less than sixty percent, which is still, like, we have, like, thirty-four people in this room right now, and just look around and just imagine that, like, at random, just pick fourteen people, and those are the only people that are gonna have any say on who our governor is, you know, that's, that's, I mean, I don't mean that, it's probably not the case in this room, because people that show up here are probably a little more civic-minded than the general public, but, you know, just, it's really important to take part, I don't care who you vote for, it's just really important to take part. And so that's my, that's my public service. Anybody else have anything to say for the good of the cause, any board members, before we move into adjourn? Mr. Strobel, about a second. All right, adjourn, thank you.